For, um, of the study session for August 12th, 2014. Brooke Hawkins.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
And Mayor Neely?
Here. Anybody have any items for the future? Hearing none. The discussion item per day is sanitary sewer rate and systems development charges study. John Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Commission. We are the one and only item for today's meeting, so we're here to razzle and dazzle you with some information about, um, SDCs and sewer rates. So, um, the lion's share of this presentation, John Gilarducci with the FCS group is going to present. He's done, we've hired FCS group to do our rate and SDC study. And, uh, so this is, um, a work session to talk about both of those items, give you an update. The rates are really the most pressing piece at this point. Um, as you know, we've been working through the sewer master plan, giving you a fair amount of update on that. We, um, our, our plan is to go through Planning Commission with that, um, master plan update. And, um, and then, but at the same time, we got the moratorium adopt on the 6th, which we thank you for that. And at the same time, we're moving forward this rate study so that we can, um, move into solutions for that moratorium and kind of move through that as quickly as we can. Then the SDC study, SDCs are a little different in that we, there's some noticing requirements that we need to go through, so that will lag beyond the, the rate issue. But tonight, we're hoping to present to you as much information you need, have as much discussion as we need to have, and bring forth a resolution to adopt, uh, new rates that would help cover the needs. So, um, that's kind of where we're hoping to get through tonight and have whatever questions we can answer, we'll bring back to you in a public hearing, uh, later this, later this month. I'm trying to remember what date, but soon, very soon. So, John, with that, you want to kick into your presentation?
Um, yeah, thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the way that we've laid this out, we'll talk about the rate results first and then the system development charges, and this, these are our results to date. Uh, when I go through the rate analysis, I'll, I'll give you a brief overview of, um, our goals for a rate study, talk about some of the key assumptions and inputs that feed into our results. Um, and then, when we look at the system development charges, we'll look at the reimbursement fee calculation, the improvement fee calculation, and then talk about key steps. So, when we do a, a rate study, the key landmark is the revenue requirement portion of that, the revenue requirement analysis. And what the revenue, revenue requirement analysis does is determines how much money is needed from rates to meet all the financial obligations of a utility, in this case, the wastewater utility. So, we look at the operating costs, the capital costs, and financial policies like, uh, target minimum balances, um, system reinvestment, and those all feed into what is that number that we need from rates to meet those obligations. So, as part of that analysis, we look at existing revenue levels and forecast those into the future and see if there's going to be enough money from rates to meet existing obligations. If not, that tells us what kind of a rate increase, uh, might be needed. And then we'll also look at the rate implementation strategy, the pattern of rate increases that might be needed. You know, a lot of times you'll have a choice whether to front load the rate increases or try to smooth them out over time. Um, and that's all, that's all that is. Some of the key assumptions you'll see reflected in our, in our numbers, in our analysis. Uh, we've gone with a, a 10-year study period in our rate forecast. You won't see all 10 years in these results, but, uh, the model goes out 10 years, so we don't, um, so, so we know what's coming even after the next five or six years. We're anticipating pretty conservative customer growth for our financial model. We're assuming that's half a percent per year. You can see the escalation factors we've used there, um, that apply to the operating budget, general inflation, construction cost inflation, benefits inflation a little bit higher, um, the franchise fee, the transfer to the building reserve is included in the operating costs. And then we have a, a minimum balance target for the, for working capital in the wastewater fund of 60 days of O and M costs, budgeted O and M. So, that, these are, that's pretty much a standard minimum balance target, just to make sure you've got some cushion in the fund from year to year. This is what the current rate structure looks like for the sewer utility. It's all based on this concept of the equivalent residential unit. Every residential customer is one ERU, and you see the, the charges there, 2110 for collection, that's the city's portion of the sewer rate, and then the treatment portion, $20.76. So, the charge per ERU, $41.86 applies, as I mentioned, to every, uh, single-family residence in the city. Commercial charges are based on their water usage. So, um, you see on the right-hand side of this table, per CCF, that's per 100 cubic feet of water usage. So, a commercial customer is charged $4.19 per 100 cubic feet of water usage to pay their, uh, for their sewer, um, their sewer bill.
Um, Tri-City, does that include the most current, um, increase?
It does.
Okay.
This is, this is the, uh, July increase.
Okay.
And, um, we're, we're basically treating that as a pass-through.
Okay.
Because it is a pass-through. So, our analysis has only to do with the collection portion of the rate, the city, the part the city controls.
Okay. Thank you.
Just curious, I'm not probably to change anything, but why, why aren't residents charged, uh, by unit water usage too?
Why, why aren't they?
Why are they not?
Um, typical, well, two, two reasons usually. Um, one is it adds a lot of volatility to the revenue stream, so, um, and when you think about how residences use water, uh, they have huge summer peaks related to outdoor irrigation and a bunch of uses of water that don't impact the sewer system at all. So, um, so that's, that's basically why. You'd be charging them for water that didn't go into the wastewater system, um, and you'd be subjecting yourself to volatility to revenues. There, there are rate structures now that are, that are becoming more common, which will charge for winter average water use, they'll charge residences for winter average because winter usage is generally what gets into the sewer system. So, they'll basically track their winter use and then charge them for that year-round. So, that's one way that residences are, uh, can be charged for water usage, but I guess the other reason is Tri-City charges, one, on a per ERU basis, too. So, that's another reason the city's adopted that approach. So, some of the key inputs, uh, that, in addition to the, the assumptions you saw a couple slides ago, these feed directly into the financial analysis. Fiscal year 2015, operating expenses are about $5.9 million. This, the sewer utility also has existing debt service on the books of, you see there a little over, uh, $500,000 a year. That will be paid off in fiscal year 2019. The capital costs in, in the next six years, um, as I mentioned, we looked out farther than that in our analysis, but just in the next six years total, almost $12 million. Those will address the moratorium and then a couple of other, a couple of other capital projects, um, in that six-year period. Where we have identified a growth-related portion to those projects, they're paid for by system development charges, um, and then the remainder is paid for by rates and fund balance.
Are you going to, are you going to come to the moratorium at all, uh, later?
I'm going to show you some slides about the cost of the moratorium piece, yeah.
Okay.
So, this is a, a glimpse of just the capital needs, um, from now through 2020, and you can see from year to year, each of those stack bars just shows where the money's coming from in order to meet the capital needs. So, in fiscal year 2015, that darker color on the, on the bottom there is from the SDC fund, and then the orange color is from rates, year to year. Um, that, that grayish lighter portion between the two there is fund balance. So, that's how you get there from year to year. Most of these, because they're not growth-related, uh, have to be paid for by rate money, um, and that's why you see those, those costs showing that way from year to year. It's the, um, it's those sewer upgrades, the pipe projects, which are predominantly moratorium-related projects, that 3.41 million there. The rest of them are other, more immediate system needs, but not related to the moratorium.
The 3.41 million is moratorium?
That's right.
Okay. And the rest are not?
Yep.
The, um, the capital funds come from where?
Well, um, you, you have some fund balance right now, so we spend, we spend what's available. Um, and then also, it is, uh, the way that we've recommended the rate increases, there are two larger increases in the first two years, and that creates, that helps feed the fund balance, so then you could spend that down in later years instead of having additional rate increases.
But, but, um, capital fund is funded through rates.
Okay. That was my question.
Short answer, rates.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's two, really two. There's SDCs and rates.
Okay.
That's really, any expense that we incur.
Okay, that, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Yeah, we just, we just differentiate the capital fund because we depreciate the capital fund generally.
Mm-hmm.
And, so, there is some difference there, but even me as the manager, I get a little confused by, you know, but it's all revenue, it's all rate revenue related.
Okay.
SDCs is purely SDCs, and then, and there's no kind of, we can, we can fund a project, like, for instance, some of the, I think, on average, the sewer upgrade projects were listed in 3.4 million. On average, I think there's about 30% of those projects that would be funded through SDCs. And the rest, the other 70%, would be rates because, uh, some of that's related to growth, a bigger portion of it's not.
So, I don't see any SDC funds being shown, used for 2019, 2020. Is that because we don't know what they're going to be available then, or are you just planning on front-loading it and using it first for certain things?
It, I believe it has to do with the projects that are scheduled for those years. So, the, the, the projects that are scheduled in those years are repair and replacement program, um, there's some I and I investigation, infiltration and inflow, those are not growth-related projects. And then of the pump station and force main improvements, Hilltop and Parish Road are scheduled in 2019 and 2020, and neither of those are growth-related. So, there, there's maybe money in the fund, but you're unable to spend it on those particular projects.
So, so the way I think of SDCs is we, 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 we're going to show you an SDC rate that's based on our build-out needs. And we have some, I mean, we really, we, we have some recommendations there, but there's options for how we proceed with SDCs, a little different than what we're going to recommend for rates. Didn't, to me, it didn't seem like there was much in the way of options for rates, but for SDCs, there's clearly some, uh, choices that, that we can make as to where we want that SDC to land. Again, we're going to make recommendations there, but the SDC project list, we never really know when that's going to come about. We could push that forward. We could say, you know, if, if, uh, development is such that we're, we have money in the bank from SDCs, we may want to move forward a project in 2019, but it's not, uh, right now programmed that way. But, but SDC projects are typically driven by how much is in the bank, okay? So, if we get a whole bunch of development in the next couple of years, we collect a fair amount of money in SDCs, and we see a press, uh, pressure for development, let's say out in the, if you have a creek area, we then can spend that money out there, assuming, assuming it's a project that's in our SDC list. So, you'll see more of that here in a bit. The other thing that I wanted to mention is a lot of the R and R program, which is, uh, basically rehabilitation of our existing pipes, um, yeah, as we move along in the program, after we move out of the moratorium projects, we need to move pretty heavily into rehabilitation of our old pipes, or, uh, we're going to find, you know, we're going to find capacity problems somewhere else. Not only do we need to make it a little bit bigger in those problem areas, but we really need to reduce, reduce the amount of flow through reduction of, you know, infiltration and inflow, and that's what that R and R program is about. And that's some, a bunch of what we're spending in 2019 and, and, um, 20.
The, um, the capital costs are going to be funded both by the SDC fund and the capital fund, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
So, the, uh, the orange portion of each bar there actually converts. Now, we look at the annual total rate revenue needs for each year. That orange bar is actually the yellow portion of this bar for each year. That was the portion of the capital, um, construction that was coming directly from rates. So, I know it, the scale's different because we've added all the operating expenses here. Um, again, that, uh, the bottom portion of this graphic, and now we're showing the rate revenue requirement for each year of the study period, uh, you've got that, uh, the darkest portion of that stack bar is city O and M, so that's collection system O and M. Treatment then is the lighter, major portion of each stack bar there. Existing debt service, orange, rate-funded CIP, yellow, and then the bar across is total revenues without any rate increases. So, you can see revenues are falling short of needs for that period. In order to meet those needs, uh, you, you can see in that table below, uh, proposed increases in 2015 and 2016 of a little under $4 per ERU in each of those years, and then less than a dollar a year per ERU in each, each year subsequent. So, you see the percentages at the top of the table, the dollar amounts at the bottom of the table, and the monthly rate per ERU, um, in the middle there. So, that would cover the capital costs as we, as we saw them on the previous page, without any new debt issues, um, all funded from cash and system development charges. It would cover cost escalation, inflation, as we've forecasted it, um, and FTEs associated with the 2015, um, budget.
So, it's 380 on top of what they pay right now?
For two years, yeah.
Two years.
Mm-hmm. 380 and that, well, 373 the second year.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've asked to be added into the model was, we're, you know, projecting these, these sewer projects have a fair amount of, um, well, the design isn't as heavy, it's the management of the projects, um, and dealing with, you know, the customers, the, a lot of the effort that goes into those projects, there's a fair amount of detail in those that happens. So, we've asked John to, um, incorporate into the model, uh, an engineer to help manage those projects, and a operations person to help get us, uh, further down the road with our, um, I and I investigation. So, TV inspection, uh, smoke testing, all those kinds of things that we need to do for that. So, that's what this program adds in, two FTEs.
Two FTEs that will then stay with the city, or?
Probably would stay with the city, yeah.
So, it's an increase of staff also?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm not real sure about that, but...
I mean, for, for us, it's, um, you know, looking at our current workload and trying to figure out how we would also do, you know, $3.4 million worth of projects right away. And then after that, again, these rehab projects typically include, you know, personal contact with each and every residence to make sure we're, we're figuring out, you know, their service line. So, it's, they're, 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 in my experience, they've been staff-heavy with regard to, um, doing sewer maintenance, because it's, there's a lot more involvement with the property owners than what a, say, a water line might require, or a street project for that matter.
Okay.
So, we did, uh, we did put together some sample monthly bills, so you get an idea of what those would actually look like for, um, for individual customers. You see for a, a single-family residence there at the top of this table, we're talking about just the collection portion of the bill going up from the 2110 to 2490. Treatment would stay the same for this fiscal year, and so the total bill from 4186 to 4566 for a single-family residence. We've tried to pick some representative, small, medium, and large commercial customers. So, the commercial small's the same, same impact as a single-family residence. For medium, which we're assuming is, uh, 30, 100 cubic feet of water usage in a month, um, that bill would go up a little over $11. And for a large commercial customer, 200, 100 cubic feet of, uh, water usage in a month, that difference, as you see there, from 837 dollars to a little over 900. So, we also, as John mentioned, um, have analyzed the system development charges, uh, as part of this study, looking at the capital plan as, uh, you may remember, an SDC is made up of two components, one being the reimbursement fee, and that, that's a buy-in to unused capacity in the existing system. And then the improvement fee is the growth share of planned capital projects. Each one of those divided by the growth that you expect them to serve gives you each fee, and then you add them together to calculate the system development charge. In calculating the reimbursement fee, one of the issues, um, and one of the reasons that we're here tonight is because there's little capacity in the existing collection system. So, that means for, for, um, the cost of that, historical cost of the collection system, there's little recoverable, there's no recoverable in the SDC reimbursement fee because there's not capacity there that growth can use. For pumping and the very small amount of what's left of the sewer system, there is available capacity, so that SDC eligible cost of total of almost $2 million, we divide that by expected growth in equivalent residential units to calculate our reimbursement fee of $132 per ERU. So, that's, you'll see in a minute, that's a small fraction of the calculated SDC. Most of it is in the improvement fee because that's where the, the major costs are. So, this is a summary of the capital plan, um, and you'll see we've got some individual projects listed there under the sewer upgrades, most of which are related to the moratorium. And then we've also got sewer extensions. So, those sewer extensions are, um, they're all growth-related capital projects. These, we're all assuming, unless you get pressure in those areas, we're assuming these will all occur outside of the rate planning period. So, they're included in the SDC calculation, but they're not in the rates. That's how you'd want it anyway, because these are growth-related projects and you presumably don't want them impacting the rates. But as you, as you look at these, we were, we carefully with staff went through and looked at each project and determined how much of each of these projects is actually adding capacity that we, will be available for growth. That's the portion of each project that we can include in the system development charge. So, from 51.5 million in total projects, about 35.2 is SDC eligible. That becomes the basis of the improvement fee, divided by our projected growth. You see the result there, $2,357 per ERU.
Can we stop there a minute?
Oh, sure.
The vehicles for the new FTEs, what are we buying them that's $90,000?
Well, we, we'd probably buy a small vehicle, which would be closer to $25,000, but, uh, the utility trucks and the, and, or back-on, that kind of vehicle.
But weren't you talking about an engineer and something else?
An engineer and an operations, someone in operations.
So, that would be an equipment upgrade?
That would be a utility truck, and to be honest with you, those are, uh, you know, you're going to spend for a board vehicle, you're going to spend probably much more than 90.
Okay.
I think that's a pretty conservative number.
So, the, the proposed SDC is the addition of the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee, and then we take out that, that, that adjustment, um, is to take out cash balance. You have an SDC cash balance that's available to spend on these projects, so we don't want to collect it again in the SDC. We have to deduct that fund balance. That equates to $144 per ERU. So, the total, um, proposed SDC, $2,346 per ERU, um, which is, as you see, an increase of 300 and change, 18% over the current sewer system development charge. These are still, uh, just so you know, and, and all systems and system needs are different, uh, even with the addition of the Tri-City treatment SDC, these are still pretty moderate system development charges as far as your neighboring, uh, communities go.
So, you're proposing 18% increase?
Yes.
Above what we are currently?
On the system development charge, that's right. I should say that's supported by the analysis. You don't have to adopt the total, obviously. Anything up to that amount is defensible.
Can we go back?
And that's through the whole city?
That's right.
That's all developed, okay.
And these only apply to new development. Um, when a site is redeveloped, only if they are, um, putting in a larger, a larger structure, larger business, would they pay an SDC, and then it's just for the incremental increase. So, it only affects new development and, and redevelopment.
But we current, have, currently have one of the highest SDCs in, uh, this region, correct?
I think you're more like middle of the pack.
I thought we were like high, I thought we were like...
Were you talking about transportation, or are you talking about?
What am I, John?
Uh, I think, well, I, we asked John to look at this, so...
Yes.
He didn't give me the specific numbers, but he, he told me that we were middle of the pack, because I was worried about that.
Of course, it depends on who you look at.
Yes.
We, we picked a few, um, that we thought you might be interested in.
Yes.
Oak Lodge Sanitary District, so, so this one plus the Tri-City charge would make the total 4,366 per ERU. Oak Lodge right now is at 5,165. Wes Lynn's 5,128. Canby's 5,034. Tigard is 4,900. Portland's 4,551. Lake Oswego is lower, they're down closer to 2,500. And Gladstone has two charges, depends on which, who your service provider is in Gladstone, 2,304. So, that gives you a, a range.
This is just for the sewer SDCs?
That's right, yeah, this is just sewer.
So, then you have the other SDCs that go on top of that, and what kind of impact does that do for businesses that want to come here?
Well, I, I, I don't know. I mean, that, that's, I'm sure, I'm sure...
Something for us to think about.
I, I wouldn't mind going back a slide, John, to figure that out. So, this is the one where I felt like, um, there was some opportunity for some discussion. So, the sewer upgrade pipes and the percentages to me, you know, those are, if, if that's all we had, our SDC would, our sewer SDC would drop off the, you know, would drop significantly.
Right.
Right? But under the sewer extensions, so, um, we've got these Priority 1 and Priority 2 projects, don't let that throw you by much. They're basically extending sewer into areas... They're basically extending sewer into areas in the, in the portions of Oregon City that are built out but not served by, not served by, they're, they're on septic systems, right? So, there's no, there, there's no, not much potential for, for development.
Without the sewer, yeah.
Without the sewer, and yet they're, they're someday going to need sewer. We get calls, you know, from time to time, somebody, whoever fails, it's always someone in need who not only, you know, financial need, but also in, in need of sewer service because their septic system fails. And they're often with, you know, the state law requires if they're within 300 feet of a sewer, they need to connect, they need to extend that. Then we find ourselves in a position where, you know, there's really no funding available for those. Typically, we require them to hire an engineer, build it to public standards, build it so that it can continue to be extended, right? You know, our thought was, well, you know, what, you know, what amount, what should we contribute to those? Should the city contribute to those? They're essentially capacity because they're adding capacity for new, new customers, but they're, they're people kind of, or they're, they're properties that are within our, our, you know, our service area already, pretty much. It just takes a, maybe a, you know, 1,000-foot of pipeline. So, what we asked them to include in this SDC eligibility was 75% of the cost of those projects. So, the city would pay 75%, and the property owners that, that benefit from that, we would have to go through that process, neighborhood meeting, meet with them, maybe a local improvement district form some way for them to pay the balance of that. So, we're not suggesting we pay the full brunt, but we're saying 25% is up to the property owners. So, that ratio could change. That was something staff just kind of said, that's, that seems reasonable, it seems motivating for someone who has a septic system that's, you know, there's never going to be a large developer that's going to come in and just build the sewer system for them. So, those projects, just keep in mind that they represent 70, that those, the total project cost represents 75% of the overall cost of those projects. And the other 25% would have to come from the property owners themselves. But it would give us a, a solution for those that we're not going to find through the development community. So, that's one piece. Doug, you keep raising your hand, you want?
Yeah. The reason they want to hook into our sewer system, that they pay 25%, we pay 75%, is that because there's some capacity in the sewer to provide for other units and that try to interfere, whatever it is, or?
Usually, these are at the end of the system, so most of these projects don't have upstream development potential. They really, the extensions are basically what, what would be needed to serve, you know, this, what's pretty much built out.
If I build a house and I'm in the city and I connect directly to the sewer system, I pay the full cost during that.
You pay, you pay the cost of the connection, and you pay the full cost of the SDC, and we're not proposing really anything different here. We're basically saying that mainline piece to extend it. If you built a new house, you would, you would, and you needed sewer service, you would have to extend that. This is existing homes. There's maybe some development potential, but only if there's sewer in there, right? So, there's not, they've got a large lot because they've got a septic system on it. So, the, to me, there isn't a, a good solution for those without help from city SDC. And so, I don't, does that make sense, or am I confusing that issue?
I guess I, for whatever reason, they have a septic system, they're forced to connect into the city system. Whereas if there was a house built next to them that could connect in the, in the city system, they, they pay the full, full, full cost of that connection, or unless I'm missing something.
I think the problem, the issue may be, the, the costs that you see here, the 4,567,500, that's already 75% of the total. So, they don't get a discount on their individual system development charge. They pay the same SDC as everybody else. We've just adjusted these costs to reflect that they're, they're going to have to pick up a portion of it over and above.
Their houses only build, they're not paying an SDC, are they?
They are when they connect.
Okay, okay.
They pay an SDC when they connect.
They'd be paying their SDC like everybody else would, and they'd be paying 25% of the overall project cost.
Yeah.
So, this is seed money, and it's a matter of how much seed money this commission thinks is worth, you know?
The other, and we also had some discussion about South End, Beaver Creek, and Park Place. One of the reasons that it can be useful to include the full cost, as we've done here, of sewer improvements in those areas is because then it enables a developer who comes in and is going to develop in those areas and build one of the sewer projects on the list, they can get an SDC credit, credit then because they've built a, a project off of the project list. If these were, if those projects were not on the list, they'd have to build it and would not get an SDC credit. So, that's one advantage to including them on the list.
The other thing that, that we need to say about South End, Beaver Creek Road, that the overall cost to serve those entire areas, so building sewer throughout, that would, you know, provide frontage sewer to every property owner, is not what's shown here. What we're showing here is pipelines that are 12-inch and larger. So, they're more of the trunk lines. For South End, there's a major pump station in Forest Main that would need to basically get sewer from out on South End, further, you know, towards the treatment plant. So, we've included that pump station in Forest Main for South End, and we've included the pipes that are 12-inch and larger. Same for Beaver Creek Road, there's no pump station but 12-inch and larger, same with Park Place. So, that's, again, a staff decision that's, that we've made, that we think is aligned with what might need to happen to spur development in those locations, and, but, and, and that is 100%. There's no, it's not, it's not like seed money, but it's, but it's 100% of just those facilities, not all the other, not all the other 8-inch collection lines that will, for instance, have to go, you know, further out into the South End basin. It's really just those larger diameter pipes, those major facilities, major sewer facilities that would serve those areas. So, keep that in mind as well. Again, we think those represent, those are appropriate, but there's, that's a subjective, our subjective proposal to you.
Back when development in South End was beginning, I know that a developer put in sewer line much further out and then got paid as the development came into it, and that was the main line. Is it anything similar to this or not?
Um, I, I don't know exactly how the details of that work. I'm not sure where our current debt came from. I don't know if that was from a sewer separation project or a contribution to that project as well. I don't, John, do you remember the debt that we have? You probably don't remember the reason why we have that debt, but I, you know, but I know that there was a special SDC for years for the South End area due to the Parish Road pump station and the Forest Main. And so, that's another way of breaking out those. There could be a different SDC in some of these areas. That just complicates our SDC a little bit. Maybe one other thing before we go too far from this? Yeah, Nancy, can you pull up that, that map? I mean, I don't want to go too far into the weeds on this, but my sense is you're kind of curious about some of these. So, you can kind of pan, or, yeah, pan over a little bit to the right, Nancy, sorry, left. There we go. So, for instance, you know, there's a South End basin, so, you know, all those blue lines we're not including in, in that number. We're really kind of including anything that's, again, 12-inch or larger.
The lighter blue or the?
Yeah.
That blue?
That, that, to me, it's dark blue. It's the bold blue lines. There's numbers on them that kind of indicate what size they are, so there's 15-inch, 12-inch, that would be included.
Yeah, okay.
The SE1 is a pump station, and then the red dotted line is a force main that takes it closer to Warner Parrot and gets it up and over the hill. We can't, I mean, we've established that the Parish Road pump station isn't big enough, and the force main associated with Parish Road pump station isn't big enough, so that's why the secondary pump station is required. And it's a, it's going to be a big one, and it's going to require a fair amount of force main. So, you know, it'd be nice to be able to have the, the SDCs in the bank so that if, you know, if we do a South End road replacement project or upgrade project, we could incorporate the sewer work with that. Again, I, you know, there, it's just, it's going to be hard because of the nature of South End with the various parcels, how we would, how there'd be one developer large enough to kind of fund that, that kind of a pump station project. I think Parish Road may have been quite different than that back in, you know, back when that was built. So, makes a lot of sense to me if, if the city's committed to seeing development in these undeveloped areas that, that we would include those in, or some, some component of those in our SDCs. And that's kind of the nature of SDCs anyway. I mean, that's the intent, right, is you collect that money upfront to, to help fund those because there's never going to be one particular developer who's got that kind of funding at his fingertips to, to be able to fund those projects. So, that, and then maybe, Nancy, just pan over a little bit to, there you go. So, Myers Road is a good example where there's a lot of septic systems along Myers Road, so that's really between Leland Road and Moccasin and that area right there. So, those, those property owners, there's some infill development. I mean, those are long lots, they're mostly bigger lots because they have septic systems on them. So, we've, we've kind of, we've estimated project cost for all of those, and we're, we're recommending that 75% of that Myers Road project, for instance, be covered using SDCs. That all assumes that the property owners get on board and are willing to pay the other 25%. So, those are the kind of situations that we're talking about. Thanks, Nancy.
One more. So, so, based on the information we've had and the, and the discussion we've had, our recommendations are the 18% or, or $3.80 per ERU per month increase in the monthly rate for the remainder of this fiscal year, which would go through June of 2015, followed by a similar increase for fiscal year 2016, and then inflationary increases after that.
So, would it be 18 and then 15 on top of that?
Yes. Yeah.
So, in the next two years, you're looking at 34% increase, is that?
Well, it's compounded, so it's all the same.
Yeah, the compounding makes it, not quite, but on the order of that, yes.
But...
One of the things that we, that we noted and we discussed with staff is that when you have commercial customers who use less than 10, 100 cubic feet of usage, if you recall that, those bills are calculated strictly on the water usage. They can end up paying substantially less than a single-family residence. That doesn't reflect what your actual costs do. When, you know, if somebody uses only two or three CCF, there are a lot of fixed costs the city incurs regardless. And so, it's very uncommon to see a rate structure like that where the monthly charges can actually go well below one ERU for a commercial customer. So, one of the things that we're recommending is that you consider charging a minimum of one ERU to your commercial customers so that you eliminate that prospect of, of their bills going up and down significantly, and then paying a lot less than their fixed cost to the city. And then our final recommendation is consideration of the calculated system development charge of 2,346 per ERU.
So, is this the last slide you had?
We had two components.
Yeah, this is the only other thing that lays out the, the anticipated schedule, and John touched on that.
So, could you go back to the next, the last one? Yes. I have an issue, I can tell you straight out, I have an issue with the 18% for SDCs on top of all the others, other SDCs that businesses have to pay. So, I would like to see a total of what we charge SDC for transportation for all of the SDCs.
Five services?
Yes, yes. And then...
The, and if it's commercial that you're focused on, those get a little more complicated.
I know, but you can ballpark it, I'm good with it.
Or are you okay with any ERU comparison equivalent?
And I'm not okay with that either, but we'll talk about that.
Well, I think what, what keyed it up was an earlier discussion, which was commercial.
Yes.
And it was, I think, the transportation one that was big.
Yes.
I think, I think, I think we've got to compartmentalize them. If you think transportations are too high, then we need to test, discuss that. But I'm going to pose the question now, the 18 and the 15%, the society of rates, are they directed to the fact that we've got a moratorium? And that's something we got to deal with.
Absolutely, I agree.
I, I don't know that we, we should make decisions on this based on anything else but the needs of, of the wastewater system. Because we can't shift transportation SDCs and...
No, 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 I get that, I get that, but I don't want to put the businesses out of not building or coming to Oregon City either because we're charging so much in, in total cost of SDCs all the way down the road.
Well, okay, but I think...
So, but I understand that it can't be divided.
I think what you have to look at, each of those SDCs have to be looked at in their own merit.
I, I agree, I agree, but I would still like to know where we're at with all of the other SDCs.
We can, we can bring that forth and share you that, share with you that. You know...
Time on that one.
What's that?
You have time on that one because you can't act on the SDCs until November.
Right.
Because of that notice period.
I get that, but I also don't like the 18%. I feel it's too high myself.
On the rates?
On the rates.
Wait, how are you going to cover the moratorium?
Well, I think that, okay, if you go back to the original slide, it's not just the moratorium. The moratorium is only the $3 million. The total for this at 18% is 1141 for all capital improvements. So, if you put all of your increase into the moratorium...
Maybe we won't look at that then.
Then we don't have to increase by 18% for all of the capital. And I understand that you guys are trying to get all of the capital done. I get that, I understand that. And I understand that you want more staff and more vehicles and all that. I just have a feeling of repercussions from our citizens.
Yeah, I, I think it's very relevant to see the total SDC cost and also how we stack up against neighboring cities in that total cost. I think that's very relevant.
So, that's, that's my issue. Those are my issues. Staffing, you want to add two staffs and vehicles to this. This is not specifically addressing the moratorium. This is, this is addressing part of the moratorium, but this is adding in all of the other capitals that you want to do, correct?
Well, this is, this is a list of all the capital that we think needs to happen. The, you know, the, to me, the question is, is on these sewer extension projects, how much is the city willing to charge to help move some of that, the project load forward? There's nothing...
Well, I get that.
There's nothing in the extension projects that, you know, short of that failed septic system, but, you know, the South End, the Beaver Creek Road, Park Place, you know, those, I think are projects that the city needs to get done, but they don't necessarily have to be funded through SDCs. It could be funded through development, through the development community.
Well, and also, I thought we were gonna talk about the moratorium and how are we gonna deal with that piece? I mean, I can see increasing rates, and I think citizens could see that, to deal with strictly the moratorium. But then you add the other projects, which I know are important, I get that. I myself would love to see sewer come down my street someday. So, I just don't know that we're gonna be able to sell this to the citizens without a lot of yelling.
Just, just so-
It's a political thing, it's not, it's not a, it's not a staffing thing at all.
But, just so, we're on the same understanding of which capital is in the rate projections. That is shown on this slide, it's the sewer upgrades, and you've talked about that, that's the moratorium. The other ones that are in the rate forecast are the pump station and force main improvements, the repair and replacement program-
Right.
I and I infiltrate investigation, and there's little else in the forecast period.
Can you, I don't know if you can do it this way, but in terms of what your forecast is, can you partition those into separately, the components that you're talking about?
So, you can see how, how much of the rate is-
Each of those bars are broken out, yeah. So, we can see what the, so the breakout in the bars in terms of the moratorium, in terms of-
Just to see them on the stack bar?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be good, yeah.
I think that would help us a lot.
Well, and I'd like to look at just strictly how, how are we gonna deal with the moratorium without-
That'll help us though.
Okay.
Those will be the bars that'll actually indicate the proportions for each of those.
Okay.
The, I guess the thing to keep in mind, and that's again, always a challenge because it means, you know, but all, you know, the 3.14, or 3.41 million, if all we're doing is funding those-
Yes.
You've got problems in years 17 and 18.
I hear ya, I hear ya.
So, I think that's, you know, a pretty important piece. And what we've heard from you in the past is that, that a solution, a final solution, the right solution, you know, you wanna deal with it once and for all. You don't want, you know, you don't want a project that gets you just close enough, you want a project-
And I get that, I just don't want to increase things to the extent that it's gonna, it's gonna actually not move us forward.
One of the concerns I think we've heard from here and from previous discussions about the effect of transportation SDCs on business development. Currently, our SDCs aren't affecting much our residential development, we've got a lot of, a lot of-
A lot of residential, yeah.
A lot of residential.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a, if you could look at what proportion of these costs, commercial affects versus residential. I mean, the commercial is basically, at this point, is, is, at this point, mostly an infill thing that we see. We don't, we don't see a whole lot occurring that, I think. You see the residential, of course, moving out into, into our, into our boundary areas, but it seems to me the, the commercial is in fact, in areas that are in fact, pretty well-built out. They might be affecting the moratorium piece, but-
Well, the 11.81 million is, is almost, there's no, not much other than infill growth, and it's the commercial that we had. All our commercial is on our existing system. So, those capital costs through 2020 represent costs for our existing system-
Yeah.
And our existing customers, whether they be residential or commercial. So, you know, to maintain that system or to upgrade that system is, 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 really has nothing to do with new growth, even though there's some potential because of the changing and increase in capacity for some SDC qualifying, you know, funding. Most of it's rate-related, and it should be paid for by the, you know, our existing customer base, because it needs maintenance. I mean, the R and R program is more about fixing old pipes that are leaking and-
Well, I agree, and we went through this with the water rate issue.
And I, one thing I'm worried about is, you know, we, we didn't, we don't have a solution for that water rate-
No, we don't.
Yet. So, it'd be nice to be able to deal with it. These, these rate increases are not what we were looking at with the water rate increases.
Right.
And, and we're, you know, we're, we're wanting to resolve this in a fairly short timeline as opposed to trying to stretch it out over 20 years-
Sure, sure.
Or something like that. And we, you know, that's the message that we've, we've kind of, you know, we've heard from you folks as well, so.
And has the sewer gone at, at least 3% every year for?
For the last six years, yes, and then, but before that, there was 14 years and no rate increases.
See, and that kills us every time, and I, I-
That shows up in the R and R.
At least, at least 3% every year, at least, every year, every department.
Consistency.
It just kills us. So, residential, can we take a look at that?
Can I ask a question first?
Sorry.
This may be a naive question, and feel free to blow it full of holes. Is there a way to assign a graduated percentage increase according to property values?
There, there's not, it, it really isn't legal.
I guess, no, we don't wanna go illegal here.
Because rates need to be based on, on usage and cost of serving a particular customer, blind to, they're generally blind to, you know, ability to pay, income level, property value, those things are tax, associated with taxes. Rates have different standards and guidelines, I guess, for how we-
I'm just worried about this 90-year-old lady in the $100,000 house that, if she sees this rate increase, it's gonna mean a lot to her.
The residential is another issue. And then, I also kind of wanted to know more about the staffing that you're recommending that we had.
So, I saw, I mean, we've got great staff now.
Oh, yeah.
We've got staff that are diligently working with, I mean, there may be a break, if we don't see any transportation funding come through the federal government, there may be a little bit of a break there. So, those staff that have typically managed our Boulevard projects, you know, I'm confident that transportation funding is gonna come through, and we're gonna be able to be successful with obtaining grants for, for those kind of projects. So, I guess what I'm feeling like is we've got, we've got a small staff of engineering project managers. Really, there's, there's really two dedicated project managers for the city-
Right.
And then myself that gets to struggle through trying to manage a project as well as a department, and then Alita who deals with development review and all the things that go along with that, and some project management. So, it's, it's a pretty small team.
Sure.
So, you throw on $3.4 million worth of projects, let's just, let's just say that's what we're gonna, you know, spend in a pretty short amount of time here. We can hire that out to consultants, and we will hire most of that out to consultants. We'll be hiring consultants, but we still gotta manage the contract, we still gotta manage the scope, we still gotta manage the public involvement, we still gotta manage all the things that go along with that. So, to me, that's that one staff person that's in City Hall, we'll find a place to squeeze them in, I'm not quite sure where we're gonna do that, but, you know, that's, that's a, to me, that's an immediate need. If we're gonna go after these sewer upgrade projects, I don't know where we have staff to manage those consultants. We've got great consultants too, by the way. They're, they're very helpful with us, and they help us kind of make our deadlines and those kind of things. But, you know, to be honest with you, they need to be managed. And whether it's preferences for how we do the work, or change orders, or anything like that, who's looking out for your interests? And I think that's your staff. So, that's the one in the, in here in the City Hall. The other staff member is just think is, we're not, we don't have, it's, it's a small crew. We've got a sanitary and stormwater crew that consists of, I think, we're seven people counting our supervisor, Eric Hand, and our crew leader, Tom Morset. So, trying to keep, keep, you know, the work effort with regard to that I investigative process, trying to do all the TV inspections associated, we still wanna manage our pavement maintenance program. So, usually when we do that, we ask them to go out and evaluate the pipelines within those pavement maintenance programs. Now, we're talking about, you know, a need, we've gotta get money thrown at those areas where they're really gonna come back to bite us in the butt. But, to do that, I think we need at least one staff person in a department that really hasn't added any staff to help, help gather that information, collect that information, do that maintenance, those kind of things. To me, they're critical needs. They're not, they're not, they're not luxuries.
Well, and I don't think anybody here disagrees with that at all. But we have staffing needs in many of our departments that, that we need to deal with eventually. This commission or the next needs to deal with staffing issues because, I mean, there, there are so many things that could be accomplished if we had enough staff. So, I, I get what you're saying with that, but I, I'm concerned about what our residents are gonna say.
Yeah, I think it's the same. I, I think an earlier concern I had heard everybody is, we got some short-term needs that we need to deal with, major ones.
Yes.
And whether you're hiring a staff person to deal with short-term needs, would, that staff person might not necessarily be needed in four years or five, is that what I, is that what I was hearing earlier?
No, I don't think that's what John was saying, it's gonna be a permanent one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that was a concern you were expressing.
Yes, yes.
That was what you were expressing earlier. I mean, we all know we have major needs in parks and recreation.
Yeah.
The point is, these are dedicated funds. We don't have dedicated funds to parks and recreation. We had, no, we don't have dedicated funds to parks and recreation of any form.
No.
And so, you know, I don't know if you can compare these needs and say we need more people in parks and rec, which we do, but, but this, this is funny, we're looking at the specific for these public works projects.
And they will be funded with the SDCs?
We can't fund staff with SDCs.
No, you can't fund staff with SDCs.
No, I know that. But they're gonna be funded by rates.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, and it was, it was percentage rates, I think, I have the feeling you were really concerned about.
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah.
And whether we had full-time, long-term positions to fill these short-term needs, whether they would be continuous.
Yes.
I mean, I see the need for a city staff person to deal with those, those, those needs. I am, I mean, I know our two people here that manage projects are extremely busy people.
Yes.
And I, I don't know if we could add a greater burden on to them, I don't see how that could happen.
But we could bring somebody in just for this project.
Yeah, you, you might be able to, but if, if it was a contractual basis, maybe you could force it, but if you brought somebody in short-term and they knew they were gonna be, they'd be gone in two years, and they got a job offer one and a half years from now, and then he'd leave us, and there were six months until.
Well, that's the gamble you take, but with the-
I don't wanna gamble that way.
But I can also tell you that you can sign somebody up for a two-year contract.
Yeah.
So, I mean, whether they get a job in a year or not, doesn't matter, their name's on the contract, and you can sign them up for two years to see the project through. But that's, you know, there are many ways you could work around that if you wanted to.
I, I guess the thing too is to see what percentage increase or, or decrease that would take out of-
If it would do anything.
The increase here.
Yeah.
And it probably wouldn't nudge it hardly at all-
Probably wouldn't do much.
When you look at the overall percentage.
Oh, I agree.
So, that's just one, another way to look at it.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, anytime a rate increase, it's really, really hard to stomach. So, I always look at, you know, is it, is it really a necessity? And are, is there any other way to fund it? Is there any other creative way or any, because nobody wants to raise rates, and that's why this is so difficult.
The rate piece is, is a challenge. The SDC piece is a little more flexible, but whatever we don't fund through an SDC is usually, either the project isn't built, or, and, you know, that's especially true with sewer. Transportation, there's grants and things a little different. We don't see those with sewer. So, you know, it's really the development community, SDCs, which is development community, and rates.
And, and debt.
And debt.
That's the one other thing you can do to spread the costs.
Yeah.
Some of these are, are annual needs, like the repair and replacement program, those don't set up well for a debt issue.
No.
But individual projects, you could, you could look at that. And, you know, that catches up with you over time. In some ways, you're in an admirable position because you can address these needs with cash without, without going out and incurring additional debt. But can't do it without rate increases, yeah.
With a rate that seems to be, I mean, what I heard from John was, you know, our rates are still in that median range compared to some of our neighboring cities.
For the sewer.
For the sewer.
Yeah.
But overall, is what people are really looking at-
Yeah.
When they look at the total SDCs and total rates.
I have another question. Is this gentleman out here, are you from the Builders Board?
Home, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. They, I'm wondering if you've worked with them on this at all?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, okay. I, I would just like to hear their reaction to this. Get their input.
We can ask for it.
We can ask for it.
The more information, the better. Sometimes.
But they have a different view on things too.
Well, of course, that's why I want it.
We all do.
Yeah, I don't know that it's, it's fair to call them-
Well, no, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I, what I was asking about is if you've worked with them and-
Yeah, not so much on this issue. I mean, I don't know where the Home Builders Association is on rates. I'm sure on SDCs, there's always a preference for lower SDCs. There's also this issue of, you know, wanting to see the, the moratorium go away as quickly as possible, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna maybe answer a little bit for it. I think there's a balance there, that they're, they're recognizing that we're in and trying to strike a balance.
Right.
You know, I mean, to me, the SDC piece is, you know, we can bring you a different proposal, it's just, I think, whatever that proposal's gonna look like, things are gonna fall off the list. We see it in the transportation SDCs.
Absolutely.
If you remember, we held the transportation SDCs, even though our project list was really long. That's creating some other problems for us in the development. As development moves forward, if we see that, you know, there's a project, it's an unfunded project on our transportation system list, yet the, the traffic analysis says, hey, you've got a problem there, you need to add that right turn lane, but it's not a project that's on our funded SDC list, it's up to that developer who broke, who's basically proposing, who's submitting a proposal that breaks that system or that intersection, they're, they're kind of on the hook for paying for that. And so, it's, it's not an SDC, but it's a development cost that they have to incur, and that makes their development not necessarily pencil. So, one way or the other, we're dealing with these growth issues, and, you know, it seems like there's a solution for the sewer that's a pretty good attract, a solution that would attract some, you know, development in some of those problem areas that we're having with Park Place, South End, Beaver Creek Road. But, you know, maybe, you know, the timeline's a little different, maybe that's the way we deal with it, and just say some of that future development needs to happen later and not necessarily try to collect on that now. But, you know, for transportation, it's really becoming a, a challenge for us because we know that there's, you know, the development adds trips.
The other-
Go ahead.
But, the other thing you can do when looking at an SDC increase like this is step it in over a couple of years. So, go from the 1987, you know, increase it 200 a year until you catch up. That's what the city did with, when the transportation SDC took the big leap-
That is exactly what we did.
Several years ago.
Yeah. Do we manage that by debt though? I mean, if we wanna get these, if we wanna get these, if we wanna get these moratorium things fixed early on, does that help us?
You will still be able to, to do that because what you're talking, you're talking about giving up an increment on the permits that are pulled in just one year. It has a, it has an impact, but in one year, it's not material enough to change the rate, to change the rate forecast, and you can still get the projects built in the study period.
What you're really talking about- What you're really talking about then, if we're going to do these projects is, it was 18, 15 or whatever it was, and there were threes. They're going, those threes are going to be higher. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so that's what you're doing. You're just postponing the.
It probably won't, it probably won't even in that six-year period affect the threes. If you were to step this in over three years, the impacts would be so spread out because we're, because in calculating the SDC, we're going out.
20.
Yeah, 20 years.
Yep.
So, it, it will be, you know, and, and there's so much to that, to the growth forecast in that period that is subject to change. I couldn't even tell you.
Sure.
It will have a material impact.
I thought it was 10 years.
That's what I thought. This plan was 10.
The, the rate forecast is 10 years. When we calculate the SDCs, we use the ma, we use the master plan and we go out the full length of the master plan and include all the growth expected in that time period as well.
Right, right. And so, what's the, what's the end point on that master plan?
I think it's 20-year plan. Yeah.
Are we?
I think it's 2035.
2035.
25, okay.
20-ish.
So, kind of what I would like to do is see what fixing the moratorium's going to look like. And then, you know, seeing how we can step it out, I guess. I don't know. I don't know the answer. It's good conversation. I enjoyed this conversation. But, also I wanted to know about residuals. What is that increase? 18% also?
Yes. So, here, I'll show you on the, so, the residential bill, it's the 18%. If you look at the top of this table.
Yeah.
Again, only on the collection portion.
Right.
So, the, the total rate would go from 4186 to 4566 per month for fiscal year 2015.
So, it's, you know, 380, four bucks a month. I don't, I don't know how upset our citizens will be, but.
You know, we hear from the citizens, but how many people drop their accounts with whatever subscriber they have for their email cable services and so forth, which I think most of my bills on that are higher than my total utility bills.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. I, I understand that.
And these, these are critical services. You know, the cable generally is a critical service. We all like them.
Right. And that goes back to the two questions. Is it a necessity? And the answer is yes. And then, are there other funding options or a different schedule? So, we're kind of looking at maybe a different schedule.
Yeah.
Or maybe a variation of that. Because I, I agree. I mean, the impact, it's, it's hard when you look at the actual percentage. And that will be communicated to people, the actual percentage increase. And that's what they're going to look at. They're not necessarily going to look at the 380.
Excuse me?
They will too, but they're also going to know the percentage.
One of the things that we did in our, in our expenditures for capital, we, we loaded the, you know, there's all those other projects, right? The R and R rehab, the I investigative.
Right, right.
But, we, we, we heard pretty loud and clear that we need to address this, this moratorium.
Right.
So, we loaded those projects into the first three or four years so that we could, you know, get those. You know, you know, if we drag this out a little bit longer, we don't have much longer to really drag out the moratorium than four years. I think we said, I think we heard six years, maybe seven if we really, and it just, I think, you know, we've talked about that as staff and that's not good for the community.
No.
It's not really good. And, and we've heard, you know, kind of loud and clear, we need to get this fixed. So, that's why we did that. We moved that forward. We tried to, you know, we looked at what the one-year rate increase looked like and it was big, right? So, we said, well, it's going to take us a little bit of time to ramp this up anyway. We're almost partway, we're partway through this fiscal year. So, if we could target, you know, a rate increase in, you know, later in this year, get maybe nine months' worth of rate increases accomplished this year and then bump the next year, that would put us well on the road to recovery for that moratorium. And.
Personally, I think that's a, like, one of the very first priorities, that it's just to have that.
I think we also have to look at how we're going to direct our right-of-way fees.
Absolutely.
And whether, whether some of this comes out of that. At the great, I mean, the great anger I fear is the kind of pushback we had on the, on the water utilities back then.
Yeah.
If we, if we got somebody that says, oh, no, you can, you've got to limit all the whole utility bills to only 3% a year, we're going to be in bad, bad trouble. And we have done things without voter approval, like the pavement utility fee. And it's done some great work and a lot of residents recognize this after the fact. But, then, we've had our management staff talking a bit about parks maintenance. And then, you know, if you, and, and a little bit discussion about maybe something to deal with capital improvements for the police department.
Yeah, and the library.
And if those things go back onto the, well, the library was voted in. I'm talking about the things that we, we've done that don't go to voter approval.
Oh, I see.
And at one point or another, we might just have a citizens' book revolt like we've had in the past and then really get messed up in the process.
Yeah.
One thing that we really got to think of.
Yeah. We, we have to be very thoughtful about that process, yes.
So, I've heard, bring back some more scenarios essentially, or a scenario. Definitely look at the SDC. Can I get a read on whether or not, you know, these, you know, how high of a priority is that economic development-related piece? Should we reduce that? You know, maybe fund a percentage of that as opposed to 100% of that? Should we, you know, take, because I think, you know, those are big projects and you'll, you'll see that affect your, your SDC.
And with the current numbers, I've also asked for a breakout of the bars for the different components.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I think it gives us a better visual in terms of how much of it is directed to the moratorium versus how much is directed to other things. And it gives a better feeling.
And how that can be adjusted.
And how that could be adjusted.
Right.
All right.
John, do we have any?
Different schedules for people who build reclamation homes, homes that, you know, recycle their gray water and all that kind of stuff. Do we have any differentiation in fees for those?
No, not now. We don't have a schedule that does that, other than water rates, you know, as consumption-based.
Well, if they could, you know, if you've got gray water, you're consuming more, but it's not going back into the sewer systems.
Yeah. For sewer systems, we don't have that kind of, we don't have that kind of a rate structure that provides, provides a discount for someone who's reusing water. Right now, we don't have that.
But, if it's reusing water, the reused water, they're not paying for again.
No, but they're using like.
Right. But, their sewer bill is, sewer bill is, for residential, it's the same rate.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah. It stays the same. We don't have a consumption-based sewer rate.
So, we're going to see you again. I don't know if it's, I imagine maybe it's in terms of another study session.
Uh, no, we're, we're, we're planning.
So, you're going to bring, you're going to bring alternatives to us at the, in our decision-making process.
Yeah. August 20th, we're, well, we're going to have to evaluate whether or not we can get everything together. We haven't really talked about that. But, the intent was to bring it back August 20th.
Can we get the information ahead of time so we can look at it?
We not.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, I don't know if, I don't think we can physically turn it around that quick. That's a week, that's a week and a day.
We'll probably have to push that. I mean, August 20th is.
Yeah.
Yes. So, what will you be expecting from us on August 20th?
Say that again?
What will you be expecting from us on August 20th?
Well, if we don't bring anything to you, we don't expect.
Nancy, can you?
We seldom expect things from you guys unless we're bringing it.
Can you, can you look and see what the next work session is? Maybe they can.
Or, or even if we need another one.
Yeah.
Even if we need a special one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be okay.
Add one.
Yeah. Yeah. Because what we've asked you to do is give us some alternatives and that's going to be very difficult to discuss really in a regular condition.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it'd be better off, even, even, even if it's a special Tuesday session.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but I don't know what's on the next agenda.
Save all of our Tuesdays for you, John.
Not all of them.
I think Eric has something to say.
Yeah, I was thinking that, that agenda's pretty full. So, I don't know. We'll have to, we'll have to talk about, we'll get back to you on that. But, we heard.
There's four items on it for, for the ninth of September. Then, they're not all real weighty. You know, some of them would require less.
I don't know. We can have 49 weighty items, it'll take all three hours.
We can do it all. We've done it all.
Eric, did you have something to say?
Step up to the mic, Eric.
Got to have it. You can stay there. He's got another mic.
Well, I've probably done it anyway.
You think you're, you think you're done?
He's hoping he's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There seemed to be a lot of discussion about economic development tonight. Didn't know if it'd be fitting maybe to roll in economic development priorities discussion. I know we had one about a year ago. We had a goal-setting session where we wanted to make it a priority for economic development. And this is touching on the Beaver Creek area, which is one of those. You know, we're getting ready to head up a study, a development impact analysis for that area. So, we can have some options for incentivizing and packaging some, some deals that might come out. So, I don't, this sounds like it might be a good time to kind of start that discussion, maybe not get in depth, but at least start it again or just kind of refresh.
To know how this might affect it. Yeah, that would be good to know.
Be good coordination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, that is, lost my agenda here, but the city manager's report.
Acting city manager's report.
That's all it says here. I'm just going by my script.
I was just clarifying. I do have one just really brief item for you. And that's just a reminder that the annual volunteer recognition event is this Thursday.
Yes.
At the EOT in conjunction with the concerts in the park. Dinner starts at 5:30. So, for those of you that are going to serve, we're asking to have you show up about 5:15. So, we'll get you all prepared and, and ready for that. And we'll roll right into the, the concert at 6:30, which is Ray Gordon this week.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, I've, I've got a couple of things. I've got a couple of questions. What's going on at the rivershore, that water thing there? It seems like a lot happened and all of a sudden it's flipped.
Well, Eric's here. Maybe he could come up and. You got to come up here.
Can't talk yet.
There's going to be a lot more happening out there with landscaping. So, the landscaper has not been on site and that's the reason that it looks the way it looks. So, as soon as he comes back, which is this week, he'll be filling in with a lot of dirt and doing all the irrigation and plantings. And so, you'll see some of that happening over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I eat out on the deck every week and it's getting kind of boring.
There's some weeds. I've seen that, yeah, that happens.
It's not a great time to plant a few plants.
Yeah. It's too hot. But, even if it was level dirt, I'd like it better. Thank you. My other question is about the Sister City people will be here Monday.
Yeah.
We're planning a day, let's say, Monday's a rest day, Tuesday is a day to the Oregon coast. So, if anybody wants to do that, there'll be a trip to the Oregon coast with them. Tuesday night is the barbecue.
Barbecue, yep.
If anybody's going to come to that, we need to know the count on that. And then, Wednesday is the tour here and the session with you. So, and I've got a commissioner and a translator living with me.
Nice.
Very nice.
Very good.
And then, they're going on the Willamette Falls tour.
Right.
On Wednesday afternoon.
Wednesday, yeah. That'd be great.
That's a tour on the river or?
Just down to the falls.
Through our, through our, through our property. Not our property, through the Mills side.
That's correct.
Race Book Mountain, have to take the tour with you. Okay, with that, anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, I just wanted to comment on a couple of public works projects that I've noticed that I've really appreciated. One is the road that leads down by Oregon City Shopping Centers at Main Street that comes up.
Firestone Alley.
Yeah. That's been torn up for a while and, and now that's near completion or completed. You're just putting in landscaping now. That looks really good. And then, that whole, that whole project there.
Be a lot safer for pedestrians.
Yes, looks really, really great. So.
It's going to look so much better than what it used to.
Well, and so much more functional. So.
Yeah. No, I think Eric's done a great job with that. So, glad he's here to hear that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I never share these kudos.
Anything else for the good of the order?
More often.
Thank you.